Thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, we are now live. Hello, everybody, welcome to the annual meeting of Llosso Town Council. Today's the 20th of May, 2025. The fire evacuation procedure for Hamilton House, there are no fire alarm tests planned for today, so should the fire alarm sound, it will be for real. In the event of a fire, please follow the instructions that will be given and congregate on the grass verge to the side of the Quick Fit, Quick Fit building. The fire exits are the main stairwell to the reception area and a separate flight of stairs in the kitchen. Reporting at meetings, in the interests of openness and transparency, councillors and members of the public are reminded that the law permits any person to film, record, photograph, or use social media in order to report on the proceedings of a meeting of the council or its committees when they are open to the public. The town council will record this meeting. Filming and photography will only be permitted from the area designated. No flash photography or additional lighting should be used without prior consent. Anyone wishing to report on the meeting should notify the clerk or chair so that they can be afforded reasonable facilities. People under the age of 18 or other members of the public not wishing to be filmed or photographed should notify the clerk or chair and should sit in the area designated for this purpose. Improper conduct or any disruptive behaviour could result in expulsion from the meeting. Can you also ensure that your mobile phones are changed to silent or switched off? And adhere to the non-smoking policy for this building and the grounds of Hamilton House. So the first order of business is to elect the mayor, councillor Patience.
Yes.
First, Chair, is it a possibility of the councillors would agree to a recorded vote on the positions of the mayor and the deputy mayor? Very similar to what we had last night at East Suffolk?
Yeah, anyone can request a recorded vote, so that's.
Okay. I think of recorded vote on the deputy and the mayor's positions if there's more than one applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So can I have nominations for mayor, please? Councillor Rappensberger.
I'd like to nominate councillor Elise Youngman.
Thank you, councillor Patience. Thank you, councillor Parker. Thank you. Councillor, councillor Pearce?
I'll second the nomination for Elise.
Okay, so we take the vote in order of.
Just check there's no further nominations.
Any further nominations? So if we take the vote in order of nominations received, do you want to do the vote?
No, you're still chairing the meeting, so that's absolutely fine for you to take the vote.
And so recorded vote, how does that work?
Yeah, so we'll go round the room and ask for votes for, sorry, we'll go around the room and ask for votes for councillor Youngman's nomination. Okay, and Lauren will record the names of those voting for councillor Youngman and those voting against, and then we'll go around and do the same, okay? And you've got to get an absolute majority, so it can't be tied, so.
Councillor Patience.
I suggest we make it a little bit easier, there's only two applicants. We tell whoever's asking the question whether we want to be a good self or the other candidate.
Is that all right? Okay, all votes for councillor Elise Youngman.
Right, so I'll assist Lauren and go round the room. Councillor Youngman, councillor Webb, councillor Rappensberger, councillor Pearce, councillor Colby, councillor Breakspear.
Thank you.
Just a moment, please.
Six in favour of councillor.
Yep, six, yep, okay.
Votes for myself.
Councillor Patience, councillor Parker, councillor Murray, councillor Moore, councillor Craig, councillor Barker, councillor Begum. Seven, and we have got 13 people here. We just did one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. We've got 14.
Councillor Jones.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
An abstention on both.
You're abstention on both, that's why the numbers are wrong, thank you. So if we'd gone round the room, we wouldn't have had that problem. So that makes it 14, that's not.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, so yeah, we've got six for councillor Youngman. Six, seven for councillor Begum. Yeah, okay, so duly elected as mayor for the forthcoming council year, councillor Begum.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
All right, so we need you to sign a declaration of acceptance of office before you can continue, okay?
Yes, please.
Yep, okay.
I'm shaking.
So that's the declaration of acceptance of office of mayor for Llosso Town Council with the forthcoming council year signed, so that's great, thank you. That's the formal election, that's why that has to be signed off. Okay, unless you want to say any words, you can now move on to the second agenda item.
Just thank you, I don't know what else to say, sorry, I'm really nervous. So the second item of business is to appoint the deputy mayors. Can I have nominations for deputy mayor, please? Councillor Pearce. Thank you, councillor Craig.
I propose councillor Sonia Barker.
Thank you, councillor Murray.
I would like to second councillor Youngman.
Councillor Page, Parker.
I second councillor Sonia Barker.
Thank you. So again, any more, any more nominations for deputy mayor?
We're going to do it the same way.
Same way, if I, I think councillor Youngman was proposed first, so votes in favour of councillor Youngman, please.
So we have councillor Youngman, councillor Webb, councillor Rappensberger, councillor Pearce, councillor Murray, councillor Jones, councillor Colby, councillor Breakspear. And yourself? No, you can start. Okay, thank you.
And votes for councillor Barker, please.
Councillor Patience, councillor Parker, councillor Moore, councillor Craig, councillor Barker and councillor Begum.
Eight in favour of councillor Youngman. Six in favour of councillor Barker.
So that makes 14, so councillor Youngman is duly appointed as deputy mayor.
Congratulations.
So would you like to have a photo taken at the end of the meeting? Or no, do you want to get on with business, we take one later or?
Do it at the end.
Yep, okay. Thank you both very much, thank you.
So we've done the fire evacuation.
Yeah.
And all that, so item four, to consider approval of apologies for absence for, from any councillors not in attendance. So we've had apologies from councillors, Conner Blowers, Wendy Brooks, Paul Page, John Pitts and Deborah Ray all with reasons provided and councillor Newsom had advised he'll be late. Thank you, can I have a proposal to accept? Thank you, councillor Pearce, seconded by councillor Rappensberger, all in favour, please. Everyone. Shall I say who's in attendance? Yeah, so in attendance is myself, councillor Nusima Begum, councillor Elise Youngman, Nick Webb, Bernie Rappensberger, Andy Pearce, Keith Patience, Graham Parker, John Murray, Christine Moore, Jen Jones, Janet Craig, Neil Colby, Bob Breakspear, Sonia Barker and staff members, Sarah Foot, acting town clerk and Lauren Elliott. Projects and committee. So item five, declarations of just interests and dispensations, 5.1. To receive declarations of disclosable pecuniary, other registrable and non-registrable interests and declarations of bias and predetermination from councillors on items on the agenda. Do we have any interest to declare? No. 5.2, to consider written requests for dispensations for interests and note dispensations granted, do we have any?
No written requests.
Thank you. Item six, to consider the draft minutes and confidential note of the full council meeting on the 22nd of April, 2025 and the confidential note of the full council on the 25th of March, 2025, which have all been received, councillor Pearce.
Can I ask, Chair, I'll vote a different way because I wasn't at the April once, I wish to abstain on that one, so could I ask for the, on the March 25 confidential, it's been taken separately.
Yep, would you like to?
So I propose accepting the March 25 confidential note, that's a good record of that.
Thank you, can I have a second, councillor Barker? Councillor Jones, did you have a comment or just seconded? Okay. All in favour, please. Everyone, and for, what was the other one? The 22nd of April, 20, 25 minutes, can I have a proposal that we accept? Councillor Jones, seconded by councillor Rappensberger, all in favour. And councillor Pearce abstaining, one abstention.
And councillor Breakspear.
And councillor Breakspear. Okay, councillor Murray?
Could I just ask, I know that some of the elements are confidential papers and respect that, but within those confidential papers, there are various actions on the council, on officers. Are those, have those been actioned? Could I ask?
Well, you'd have to give us a clue what they were and.
Well, there were a limited number of actions, some of them, okay.
We can, we can talk about it in confidential session.
And have a look at them and do an email response if you want.
We can, we can look at it in confidential session. Where are we? Item seven, to receive the minutes from the following committees and note any recommendations will all be considered at the full council meeting on the 27th of May, 2025. So out of the list, the ones that we've received are the planning committee, one, 7.3 and 7.5, climate and ecological emergency committee, all the others haven't been received yet. But of the ones that we've received, does anybody have any comments? Councillor Pearce.
Well, on the basis that they're all committees and therefore will be approved by the respective committees, I just propose that we have, that those we have received, that we just acknowledge and note that they have been received. We're not being asked to approve them, are we?
No, no, it's just to receive them and.
So I propose that the ones that you've said we have received, that we note they've been received, so it can be minute accordingly.
Can I have a second for that proposal, councillor Colby? All in favour, please. That's everyone. Item eight, a public forum, an opportunity for the public to make comments on matters, on any matters on this agenda and to consider any advance comments from the public. Do we have any advance comments, Lauren?
No advance comments, no one in attendance on the webinar.
Okay, we have one member of the public, do you wish to speak on any of those? Item nine, to review and adopt the council's policies and procedures, including standing orders and financial regs, regulations, they're in the finance folder, I had a bit of trouble finding them. Councillor Pearce.
Propose that we accept and adopt them accordingly, noting that there were recommendations from standing orders and policies, but additional recommendations, not contrary recommendations, but additional recommendations from F and G. So, so proposing that we accept and adopt them with the recommendations from both standing orders and policies and F and G.
Okay, anybody have any other comments? Can I have a second, please? Councillor Colby, all in favour. That's everyone. Item 10, to consider the council's approach to risk management and appropriate policies and documents. Do we have anything on that?
Yeah, so you've seen the document, the risk management document, F and G had a look at it first, I believe, if I remember, or did it come to the last full council? Yeah, it has been to full council, it's a working document, so it's just to adopt as our risk management policy and noting the committees have got a standing item now to look at risk management as well.
Okay, so we don't need councillor Pearce.
So propose that we do adopt this as a working document that will obviously be reviewed and updated on an ongoing basis.
Have a second, please, councillor Rappensberger, all in favour. Everyone. Item 11, to review and adopt delegated authority and committee arrangements, 11.1, committees including the following. 11.1A, to review and consider adoption of the terms of reference. Is that for each committee or is that as a whole? So we'd have to go through each one?
You can do it as a whole, but yeah.
Okay, councillor Colby.
I propose that we actually accept all the terms of reference because each of the committees has had an opportunity to make any, report any changes during the year and then obviously, once it gets to the new committee, they'll have the chance, if they want to at that point, to come to full council. So I so propose.
Okay, seconded by yourself councillor Pearce, all in favour, please. Everyone. 11.1B, to consider committee membership, including non-councillor members of the climate and ecological emergency committee and the appointment of substitutes. So if we do this one, one by one. So the first one is aid. So who would like to, is it, who would like to be on it, right? That's.
Yes, yes, membership. Some of these were provided in advance, that was uploaded to the website, if that makes it easier. I can read off who I've got on here so far, if that's easier, because some of them aren't in attendance tonight, so.
So if Lauren reads off the requests that we've received to date, okay? They're requests that have been made to the office and received to join the committees that we're going to go through. Then if anyone else who's present wants to add their name to the list, do so and then we'll vote to accept those.
Yeah, apologies, I may have missed someone from these advanced lists as well. So for assets inclusion and development committee, we've got councillors Wendy Brooks, Neil Colby, John Murray, John Pitts, Bernie Rappensberger, Deborah Ray, Nick Webb and Elise Youngman. Does anybody, councillor Jones?
Put my mic on. I'd like to join aid.
Councillor Pearce? You'd like to join as well? Okay, we need like a proposal and a second and a vote to approve, yeah. So I need a.
So sorry, just as a point of order then, is everyone happy that we propose and vote on these as block or do you want to do individual councillors? Which will obviously be a lengthy process, but there's the option. We usually do it on block, just double checking.
Councillor Pearce?
So I propose we accept the ones that have already been submitted along with the addition of Jenny Martin.
Can I have a second, councillor Youngman? All in favour, please. Yep. So the next one.
But here we go, is there a possibility that they could be put on the screen, please? Because we, I can't hear you, I don't think councillor Barker's in the same position as I am. I'm sorry, but we just can't hear you.
I'll try and shout at the names then.
It's not the use, Chair, it's the officers.
Lauren, you're going to have to shout.
I agree, I'm struggling as well.
Right, so what we'll do then, we'll give a recap of what we've done so far, which is the names of councillors that have now been nominated and agreed to aid. And then we'll try and talk a bit louder because it will delay things, we have to set the screen up. So Lauren will recap on who's been appointed to aid, yeah?
Right, so for aid committee, we've got councillors Wendy Brooks, Neil Colby, John Murray, John Pitts, Bernie Rappensberger, Deborah Ray, Nick Webb, Elise Youngman, Jen Jones and Andy Pearce. So and then the next one is the climate and ecological emergency committee. So for climate and ecological emergency committee, we do currently have non-councillor members. We contacted all of our current non-councillor members and asked if they would like to reapply to join this committee again. And we also went out publicly on social media, asking for, for any other member of the public who'd like to put their names forward. And we have had an application from Cathy Williams, who is one of our current non-councillor members who would like to join again. So in terms of councillors for this committee, we've had Wendy Brooks, Neil Colby, John Murray, Paul Page, John Pitts and Deborah Ray have put their names forward.
Can I have a proposal, councillor Colby?
Proposed with the, and we can vote on the number of the public at the same time, so both, all the councillors and the member of public.
Thank you, can I have a second, please? Councillor Rappensberger? Any comments? All in favour. Everyone.
Okay, so next on the list is the finance and governance committee. So requests that we've received to date are councillors Blowers, Brooks, Colby, Page, Patience, Rappensberger and Ray.
I would also like to be on it, but the timing doesn't work for me at the moment. I don't know if I should join and then hope that the time gets changed.
You should join, this is the opportunity to join, yeah.
Councillor Pearce?
I'd also like to join.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Parker?
Yes. Right, okay, I haven't, but we can add it, thank you.
Councillor Jones?
Likewise, with Andy, I'd like to join.
Thank you.
Councillor Pearce?
So I propose that all those who have submitted their names in advance, plus the four names, I think it was, who have just been added here. I propose that they all be approved as members.
Thank you, seconded by councillor Jones, all in favour. Everyone.
Okay, so the next one is the personnel committee. Requests to date are councillors Barker, Begum, Blowers, Brooks, Colby, Murray, Newsom, Patience, Rappensberger, Webb and Youngman.
Councillor Parker? That's all right, you can just add your name on, yeah. Councillor Pearce?
I'd also like to join, please.
Councillor Jones?
And me, thank you.
Anyone else? I think that's the whole council.
Nearly.
Councillor Pearce?
So I propose again that all those who've submitted their names in advance, plus the additional names that have been put forward at this meeting be confirmed as members.
Thank you, councillor Webb?
Seconded.
Thank you, all in favour. Everyone.
Okay, next in alphabetical is planning committee. So we've got councillors Brooks, Colby, Newsom, Murray, Rappensberger and Youngman.
Anybody else want to join councillor Jones? Please. Can I have a proposal that we accept councillor Youngman? Seconded by councillor Rappensberger, all in favour, please. Everyone.
Okay. Marina Theatre Project Committee, councillors Barker, Begum, Colby and Moore.
Councillor Pearce?
I would like to join, please.
Thank you, anybody else? Have a proposal that we accept those that have been, councillor Barker? Seconded by councillor Jones, all in favour, please. Thank you, everyone.
Town Hall Project Committee, councillors Barker, Begum, Colby, Rappensberger and Webb.
Anybody else?
Yes, of course, Barker, Begum, Colby, Rappensberger and Webb.
Councillor Pearce?
I'd like to join, please.
Okay. Anybody else, councillor Colby? Proposing, yeah. Seconded by councillor Rappensberger, all in favour, please. Can you, are you all right, Keith? You're shaking your head. Is that all of them?
Yeah, that's appointments to committees concluded, thank you.
So 11.1C, to appoint committee chairs, again, if we take that in order.
So we'll go back to aid, yeah, so we need a proposal for a chair of the aid committee, thank you.
Councillor Parker?
Microphone, please.
Can you use a microphone, please? Thank you. You're not on it.
It's not on that committee, councillor Parker.
Councillor Youngman?
I would like to propose Bernie.
Councillor Pearce?
Second.
Are you happy to accept that proposal? All in favour, please. That's everyone. Next, climate?
Yeah, so the chair of the climate committee, you have the hand over to you now, yeah?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So chair for climate, ecological, councillor Barker.
I'd like to propose Paul Page, thank you.
Can I have a second for Paul? Councillor Colby, does anybody else want to stand for chair of climate? All in favour then? Any against? Abstentions, one abstention. Next. Yeah. Are you all right, Keith, can you hear? Okay. So the next one is finance, can I have a chair for finance, please? Councillor Pearce?
Proposed, no.
Thank you, seconded by councillor Rappensberger, all in favour, please. That's everyone, yeah. Personnel, who would like to go for chair for personnel? Councillor Rappensberger?
I'd like to propose councillor Newsom to continue, please, he's willing to, I spoke with him this morning.
Thank you. Councillor Pearce?
Second.
Thank you. Any other nominations for chair of personnel? All in favour then, please. That's everyone. Planning, who would like to, planning, councillor Youngman?
I'd like to propose Jen, please.
Thank you, seconded by councillor Colby, any other nominations for planning? All in favour then? That's everyone. I think that's it, isn't it? Yeah. 11.1D, to review any delegations officer committee and subcommittee. Councillor Pearce?
Propose that all committee and subcommittee delegations be renewed for a further year. Following the resolution last year, staff delegations automatically lapsed, but the staff delegations have already been presented, both the existing ones and the new ones, and they were recommended at F and G, was it, Sarah? So I propose that we endorse the F and G recommendation that the, both the existing and new delegations to officers that were presented to that meeting be confirmed for a 12-month period, subject to the clarification that there are no delegations on horticultural policy. And we had agreed that last year at full council, that there should be a meeting between members of aid parks and the ground maintenance team to agree horticultural policy and resourcing before we have to think about ball bordering and so on this year. So just to clarify, that is not included in the delegations.
Seconded, councillor Colby? All in favour, please. 11.2, other officer delegations and signatory delegations. Councillor Pearce?
I'm happy, unless anybody else wants to put themselves forward, that the, the existing, well, I'd certainly like to continue as an authorised signatory, but there, what are there? So there's bank reconciliations, authorised.
That's later on.
Yeah, that's later on the.
Beg your pardon, my mistake.
So I think this one, there's no other officer delegations to request as far as I'm concerned. So it's just confirming that the mayor and chair of finance act has signatories on documents on behalf of the council, I believe. Thank you.
So propose.
Seconded by councillor Jones, all in favour, please. Yes, thank you.
I just ask a question of Sarah, please, Chair. You know when we have like, like a document that has to be signed by the mayor and chair of finance? There are certain documents that you, in your capacity as acting clerk, like instructions could do. Are they done as part of your role contractually or do they, do they have to be confirmed as a delegation?
They're normally witnessed by, I think the word normally is witnessed by an officer of the council, so it's, yeah. A contractual thing that I'm an officer of the council, I don't think it's a delegation.
Okay, so item 12, to review and agree the full.
Oh, sorry, you've skipped one, 11.13?
Oh, sorry, 11.3. To note the requirements of the town council's training policy. That's just to note, but does anybody have any comments? Councillor Pearce?
Reinforcing that this is mandatory training as opposed to voluntary training that councillors might opt to undertake on top of it. As it's been discussed at length during committee stage, like throughout the year in full council, I propose that we endorse it for a further year.
Councillor Jones, seconding? All in favour, please.
We've got a date in June for the planning trainings, we'll get that circulated out to members of the planning committee and make arrangements for any other training gaps to be filled.
Item 12, to review and agree the full council and committees meeting schedule for 2025, 2026 and note the planned schedule for subcommittees. Obviously, I've said about finance, but councillor Pearce?
Well, propose that we agree provisionally as is, but noting that each committee will need to make a recommendation on any changes based on the 25, 26 membership. And changes may be requested in light of that.
councillor Colby.
Second.
All in favour, please. Item thirteen, to consider the receipt of summons to meetings electronically. Do we know what's happening with that system? I can't remember what it's called now.
Decisions, yeah, it's very nearly that, this is just that, it's so archaic, can't believe it, it still says in all local council standing orders that at the annual meeting you have to agree that you will summons, which is a legal thing you have to do, you have to summons legally meetings, and if you want to do it electronically, you have to agree to a meeting. If you didn't agree to do it electronically, obviously, one of the team of officers would be visiting twenty houses with twenty envelopes of papers, so it's a bit of an archaic thing, but it's just a thing we have to do.
councillor Colby.
I propose it before we get through all that, but yeah.
councillor Pearce, seconding, all in favour, please. That's everyone. Item fourteen, to review the register of land and assets, including building and office equipment. Does anybody have any comments? councillor Pearce.
I'm happy to propose exceptions as is, but can we keep this under active review because of the two projects? So there's obviously going to be a new building in the marina, and there's going to be new equipment purchased and installed. So can we make sure that that is actively monitored and updated throughout the year, please?
Would somebody like to second councillor Pearce's proposal councillor Webb? Any other comments? All in favour then. That's everyone. Item fifteen, to review and appoint representatives of the council on external bodies. This is one that takes time.
This is always the more difficult item of the night, we've tried to, we had a little discussion in the office today about this, because as you know, Lauren's emailed you all and so our notion in the office would be that councillors aren't very active on outside bodies and we don't actually have many councillors attending outside body meetings, and that would be based on the number of reports we get back to council meetings. So we were quite staggered that we got back so much detail about what you're all doing out there on these outside bodies, so can, it's an opportunity to remind people to give reports back of the activities they do on outside bodies, please, because we were quite surprised how active you all are. And was contrary to what we thought we were going to get back, so.
councillor Pearce.
I think that's point well made, because I don't always submit a report, particularly if the body that I'm on produces its own minutes. I tend to wait until the minutes are provided and then circulate those. But what I would like to ask is for clarification, because when reports have been submitted, sometimes they just get added to the councillor update, and other times I know it's been requested that we have them as full council, just so if there is any Q and A on the things in the report, we're in there. Can we agree a protocol perhaps that where reports are submitted, even if there are no comments to make, they are added to the next full council agenda, so that there is an opportunity for anyone who wishes to ask questions to do so, so that we don't have to do it on a case by case basis?
I thought they were already, when we receive a report, they're, they're put on the full council agenda.
If they are routinely, I'm fine, I know, I know it has been raised in the past, so I didn't know whether it was being done differently for different bodies.
I think how we treat it in the office is there's a difference between getting a bespoke report from a councillor who's attended a meeting and their view in relation to the work of the town council as just being supplied with the minutes of their organisation's meeting, which might just go in the update. So if there's things that need to go on the full council agenda, it needs to be a report from an individual councillor about their attendance at that meeting.
councillor Barker.
Yeah, I was going to say something on this, because I know councillor Ray and I, every meeting we've attended, I think bar the last one when I wasn't available and councillor Ray was going to submit it, we've submitted reports for each meeting. And we also get minutes which go on the update, which goes to all councillors from first light, so personally, I think it's really important that if you go along to these meetings and you represent the council, that the council and the councillors see what you're actually up to.
If we could send that round again, the, the report template, that would be great. councillor Pearce.
Yes, I agree, even though I don't always do it myself, I hold my hand up. The only thing I'm saying is like for the Kitty Wake partnership, for example, they produce minutes and it's a multi-agency body. I think it's very relevant that at least climate sees that, and then it goes to full council, particularly because we have an asset that is the site of a Kitty Wake colony. And but if I do a report, all I'm really going to be doing is duplicating what is in those minutes, so could I, could I potentially do a report just highlighting key points and say, please, please see attached minutes for specific detail rather than just duplicate what's already in there?
Yeah, sounds good.
Is that okay?
Yeah. councillor Murray.
It would seem to me sensible that if, if the report produced by the organisation covers the issues, there's no point trying to rewrite in your own words, if there's some significant points to make about it, yeah, but it's getting a report, not asking people necessarily to create something alongside what may already exist, so if, if there's one produced, why not just submit that with a note that that's what's happened?
Yeah. Okay, so if we go through all the outside bodies, Lauren? Or I can do it if you send it to me. I've got it here.
So you've got the, yeah, so we'll.
Do you want me to?
So, so I think the only, we can do it when we get to it, sorry.
Right, so the first one is the board of trustees of lost of charity board, charity, what? Lost of charity board charities trustee position. The twenty twenty four representatives were Paul Page and Andy Pearce. councillor Pearce.
I'd like to propose to keep those, I do attend most of the meetings, there are a couple earlier this year that I didn't, they're normally on the second Wednesday in a month. So where I've had another engagement, I've not been able to, but I have been an active member. I am registered with the charity commission. So I would like to propose that both of those remain as trustees for a further year.
Seconded by councillor Elise Youngman, all in favour, please. That's everyone. Next one, CFAS and promoting Patefield Group, the current representative, or previous representative is John Pitts and substitute is Bob.
The Pitts did say he's happy to continue in that role.
Okay, and Bob's the substitute at the moment, are we happy to councillor Colby? Yep, seconded by councillor Webb, all in favour. That's everyone. East Suffolk Community Safety Partnership, the current is Wendy Brooks and substitute Deborah Ray, councillor Webb.
I'd like to join that if possible.
As the rep?
Yes, please.
Seconded by councillor Colby. If we deal with that one first, then all in favour of councillor Webb being the rep. That's everyone. Anyone like to be the substitute councillor Jones?
Please.
Seconded by councillor Pearce. All in favour of councillor Jones as the sub. That's everyone, thank you. Next one's First Light Festival Environmental Task Force, it's Deborah Ray and Paul Page as substitute. councillor Colby. Seconded by councillor Pearce, all in favour, please. councillor Parker, are you voting? First Light Festival Steering Group, at the moment it's Sonia Barker and Deborah Ray. Yeah, I was continuing. Okay, councillor Pearce.
I'd like to propose I continue if they're willing.
Seconded by councillor Webb, all in favour, please. Everyone. Friends of Fenn Park, currently it's Christian Newsome and Bernie as the sub. councillor Youngman.
I propose they stay the same.
Thank you, seconded by councillor Pearce, all in favour. councillor Murray. We honour Jack Rose Old Lostoff Society, at the moment it's Neil Colby and Bernie as the sub.
I didn't know I was still on that, I thought I'd come off last year.
Are you happy to stay on as the rep?
If Bernie had, if I'm, if Bernie would be having to take on the main, sorry.
Bernie would be happy to take on the main role and add sub for you if the other way around.
I don't think, I'm happy to remain a sub, but because I've already got the Kirkley stuff, the Jack Rose is at the other end of town, so transport wise. I don't mind doing the occasional substitute, but I wouldn't want to be the main rep on it.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead that way then, sorry.
So you're proposing councillor Colby?
I can't be proposed myself.
You can, can't you? Yeah, you can. All right, councillor Webb's proposing, seconded by.
No, 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 can I just clarify here for declarations, I'm actually treasurer of the Jack Rose Old Lostoff Society in my personal capacity, so I won't be voting on this matter.
Can I have a second, please councillor Rappensberger, all in favour. One abstention. Joint Coastal Projects Board, no one on, oh councillor Pearce. Thank you, can I have a second to please councillor Rappensberger? Joint Coastal Projects Board. So the proposal is for Keith to be our rep, seconded by, wait, proposed by Bernie, seconded by councillor Webb.
The other way around, I think.
Either or, all in favour, please.
We didn't, you can do a substitute.
Yeah, would anybody like to be a substitute on the Joint Coastal Projects Board councillor Murray? Would like to be a sub, yeah.
Yeah.
Proposed by councillor Webb, seconded by councillor Pearce, all in favour, please. That's everyone. Kinder Transport Statue Working Group, at the moment it's Sonia Barker, Wendy Brooks, Neil Colby, Andy Pearce and Elise Youngman. Would anybody else like to join? Can I have a proposal that we keep the ones that have put themselves forward councillor Rappensberger, seconded by councillor Colby, all in favour, please. That's everyone, and I guess Christian's abstaining at the moment, we're just going through all the outside bodies. Kirkley Peoples Forum, at the moment it's Christian Newsome and Bernie Rappensberger. councillor Pearce.
Proposed we continue with that representation if they're both still willing.
Thank you, seconded by councillor Colby, all in favour, please. That's everyone. Kirkley Pocket Park Group, well, that's a bit of a tongue twister, Christian Newsome is the rep and Bernie's the sub. councillor Pearce.
Again, proposed we continue if both are willing with that arrangement.
Seconded by councillor Colby, all in favour, please. councillor Pearce, thank you. Lostoft and District Allotment Association, it's, at the moment it's Neil Colby and Andy Pearce, councillor Pearce.
I'd like to continue with that, but bearing in mind that the, A, the rep has no voting rights. It's essentially liaison position, and the meetings currently clash with full council. So in practice, the rep tends to liaise with the chair and the site reps and meet with them separately rather than attend the regular monthly meetings. Because to attend the regular monthly meetings, they'd be having, they'd be having to send apologies to full council.
I'm happy for Andy to be the, the main person then.
It's two people, so there's not, it's not a sub and a rep.
It was before, I think it's two because I wasn't here last year.
Is it two representatives or is it a sub and a rep, because it's got two on there?
Yeah, we did, oh, sorry. Yeah, we did appoint two representatives before, but it can be rep and sub, that's fine as well.
So you'd rather be sub, okay. All right, councillor Youngman.
I'll propose.
Thank you, can I have a second, please councillor Rappensberger, all in favour. That's everyone. Lostoft and Northern Parish's Community Partnership. At the moment it's Neil Colby and Andy Pearce. councillor Pearce.
If everybody's happy, I'd like to continue with that arrangement.
Thank you, seconded by councillor Jones. All in favour, please. You're not voting? Okay, one abstention. Lostoft and Plezier Twinning Association, at the moment councillor Brooks is the rep and she would like to remain as the sub is Andy Pearce. The association have also contacted the office to request that councillor Brooks remains the rep. Councillor Brooks has attended meetings this year and considers their work relevant to the council. So I'll propose councillor Brooks stays as rep and Andy, you're happy to be sub still? Seconded by councillor Colby, all in favour, please. That's everyone. Last off Food Network, I am the rep and Andy is the sub, I'm happy to continue, I don't think they have any meetings planned for a while now, though.
No, but it's quite a fluid situation, because after Lowestoft Rising, it had fallen to Community Action Suffolk, that arrangement I believe ended on the thirty first of March, so it's very fluid, the coordination going forward is TBC. So I think there's a very active role for both the Lowestoft Food Network reps and the Community Partnership reps to work together on that one, as, as they were last year.
Can, can we ask them though, that can we send two reps instead of having a rep and a sub, because I actually find it really useful having Andy there. Councillor Patience.
Respect me chair, you've missed one out.
Have I?
The Flood Protection Group.
It's not on my list. You might be looking at an old list, the list I've got, it doesn't have it on there.
Doesn't it?
Group has been confirmed as being disbanded.
Disbanded, right, okay, thank you.
councillor Murray.
Thank you, the copy I've got also says about flood risk management group, it may well have been disbanded. And I'm not quite sure of the protocol for this stage of the meeting. But I think in order the importance of this issue to the town and therefore the council, I think we should make appropriate representation to get it undisbanded and and or do something about creating something.
Okay, councillor Pearce.
Ask a question, is the only reason it's disbanded is because it's been emerged into another body like that earlier coast one that was mentioned?
Do you know Sarah? Or Lauren? No. We can find out.
And I was on it last year. But there was no absolute three fifths or five eighths of, very little happened.
councillor Patience.
Yeah, I took the agree with the sentiments of councillor Murray, it's important that for Lowestoft in, in collaboration with what's happening up in the Wash.
Yeah.
It's important that we have this either comes a boat, otherwise if it pulls ahead of the wash, it's going to have serious complication for Lowestoft. Particularly as we haven't got a barrier bridge anymore.
I think we all know how important this issue is, but the, the, yeah, if the group has been disbanded, we can't put any reps on it. This, which is what we're doing at the moment, but I take what you've said councillor Murray.
Yeah, and my, my point therefore is if we can put a marker down for ourselves at the right point to have an agenda item on the right committee to do something about it, not just go, oh, well, that's it, gone.
So councillor Murray's asked for an item about flood defences to be on the next full council, so perhaps we can merge that into
Yeah.
one agenda item, the two issues.
I'd be happy with that.
Yeah, councillor Pearce.
To my point, because I was going to provisionally propose that we continue the existing representation until we find out whether there's a successor body. And if there is a successor body that we have representation on, that they then become reps on that successor body. And but I'm happy with that arrangement, so long as it doesn't, it isn't just left, that's fine.
It's, it's on the agenda for next week. So going back to the Last Off Food Network, councillor Colby.
I would be interested in being a substitute if you need one on there, and I propose the.
Okay, yeah, so if we could find out if they're happy with two reps and a sub then. Okay, so can I have a proposal for that, please? Yeah.
Just Food Network?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Seconded by councillor Barker, all in favour, please. Lostoft in Bloom, councillor Brooks is the, is the rep, there's no sub. Councillor Brooks has not been notified of any meetings this year, no longer wishes to continue as the town council's rep. So not aware of any meetings this year, but councillor Brooks doesn't wish to be on it anyway, does anybody want to be on it?
If you want, I'll try and find what's going on.
Thank you councillor Colby, councillor Pearce, are you proposing?
So if it's still me, and I propose Neil as our rep.
Can I have a second to please councillor Rappensberger, all in favour. That's everyone. Last off Kitty Weight Partnership, at the moment it's Andy Pearce and Wendy Brooks as the sub. councillor Youngman.
I propose Andy if he still wants it.
Thank you, seconded by councillor Rappensberger, all in favour, please. That's everyone. Uh, Lowestoft Museum trustee position, at the moment it's John Pitts and he has advised that he would like to retain this role. Councillor Pearce?
As he's so advised, I propose that, um, that he be rep for a further year.
Seconded by councillor Rappensberger, all in favour, please. That's everyone. Last off North Cliff Community Garden CIO, at the moment it's Paul Page and Deborah Ray. Councillor Ray joins a group of volunteers which meets monthly to work on the garden and has asked the group to provide a schedule of all the work completed so far. Councillor Ray reports works to improve this piece of land, uh, are progressing well. So I don't know if Paul still wants to be on it, but councillor Pearce?
Um, well, I propose that, um, Paul and Debbie continue as our reps, subject to them, uh, confirming that they're willing to do so.
Seconded by councillor Youngman, all in favour, please. That's everyone. Um, the Lowestoft Placeboard, they have advised that they would like the mayor to be the rep on the placeboard. Uh, previously we had, um, a councillor be a rep, but they have said that following our AGM, they would want the mayor to be the appointed rep. Councillor Colby?
I think, Chair, um, we, there is a point here that we should actually be deciding who our reps are rather than them actually telling us who our rep will be, but I see no, no issue. I would be happy to propose you to be the rep anyway.
Does anybody have any objections to that? Councillor Pearce?
No, uh, I don't have any objections. I, I agree with Neil because we had a similar issue back in 2019 with another body. The, the difference there, that was a trustee body. So the mayor would have owned the first duty to effectively an external body, which, uh, raises potential conflict issues. As this isn't a trust board and they would be acting as our rep, uh, I'm happy to second Neil's proposal, but it would, it's our proposal.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and will be reviewed as such next year.
Yeah. Uh, all in favour then, please? Thank you, that's everyone. Last off South Pier Limited Management Committee, at the moment it's Andy Pearce and Bernie as sub. And, uh, councillor Colby's proposing, seconded by councillor Webb, all in favour, please. Thank you. Uh, Lowestoft Vision Management Committee, at the moment it's me, I'm happy to stay on unless anybody else wants to do it. Councillor Pearce?
Uh, propose that you continue for a further year if you're willing to do so.
Seconded by councillor Webb, all in favour. That's everyone. National Literacy Trust in Suffolk, at the moment it's Connor Blowers and he's indicated that he would like to remain as the rep. Councillor Jones?
I propose that he continues.
Thank you, seconded by councillor Pearce, all in favour, please. That's everyone. Yeah.
Any chance I could be as well? Um, it's.
Sub.
Sub.
Do they take subs? Because it's not on the, on the list.
Uh, we can certainly check with them.
Yeah, I can't see why not. Uh, councillor Pearce?
So, uh, on the basis that they're willing to accept a substitute member if Connor is, uh, if Connor was ever unable to attend, uh, I so propose Elise be our sub.
Second, all in favour, please. Everyone. Patefield Coast Protection Steering Group, at the moment it's John Pitts and Bob as sub, um. Councillor Pitts has advised he would like to retain his role. Councillor Pearce?
Propose that arrangement continues.
Thank you, seconded by councillor Colby, all in favour, please. That's everyone. Plastic Free Communities Steering Group, it's Deborah Ray. Um, I think she would still like to remain, yep. Councillor Pearce?
Propose that arrangement continues.
Seconded by councillor Webb, all in favour, please. Suffolk Enhanced Passenger Interest Group, John Sillett.
Uh, so John was a non-councillor member of the Climate and Ecological Emergency Committee and he's now stepped down from that committee.
Okay. Councillor Colby?
This is an important committee actually for us to actually have someone on because they do a lot of the reviews of all the bus routes and everything and have a lot of input on there, and I know we've been talking about that recently. Um, if no one else is willing, I'll, I'll actually put my name forward for it.
Thank you. Councillor Murray, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, it was just that I was unfamiliar with what Suffolk Enhanced Passenger Interest Group means. Um, there are one or two other ones where my ignorance comes to the fore as well. Sometimes it would be useful to have, I don't know, somewhere, a wee bit of information about what these groups are, because as we haven't had reports.
Yeah.
And it's just a name.
We've had that, so don't worry.
May not know what they are.
I'm sure that was discussed before. Councillor Pearce?
I'm happy to propose Neil.
Thank you. Councillor Newsom?
I was just saying, going to say, I think the enhanced partnership is to do with, um, government funding towards uh, local bus services and stuff like that, just to clarify for councillor Murray. You have a conflict of interest for me, though, innit?
Is it a conflict of interest or is it that we could use your expertise? Okay. Um, so councillor Pearce has proposed councillor Colby to be our rep. Can I have a second, please? Councillor Jones, all in favour? That's everyone. Wavine Disability Forum, our current rep is Neil Colby and sub Wendy Brooks. Has Wendy indicated if she'd like to stay on as sub?
She hasn't said no, so I'm not sure.
Neil, are you happy to stay on as the rep? Councillor Jones proposing Neil and Wendy, seconded by councillor Rappensberger, all in favour, please. That's everyone. And the last one, Wary Lines Community Rail Partnership Steering Group, at the moment it's Graham Parker as our rep and Christian Newsom as sub. Um, councillor Webb?
I would be, uh, continuing that arrangement.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Pearce, all in favour, please. That's everyone. That was quick and painless.
Look forward to receiving lots of reports.
Yes. Right, where are we?
Um. Sixteen.
Sixteen. To confirm the arrangements for insurance cover.
This has been through FNG and the insurance is in place the last year of its, um, arrangement and we'll be going to tender for the policy starting next year. Sorry.
Anybody have any comments, questions?
Confirm it. Probably do confirm it.
Thank you. Yeah, councillor Pearce?
Uh, second proposal, but, uh, with a request that with regarding to the rebroke, when that gets underway, could we have an update? Go to FNG, please.
All in favour, please. Everyone. Councillor Patience? Count, yeah, oh, sorry, I missed it. Um, eighteen, to consider the following financial matters for 2025, 2026. Have I missed something?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, to review subscriptions. Councillor Colby?
Um, there's been a whole this submitted round and I propose we just go ahead and agree that, as is already the case.
Okay, councillor Jones, seconding, all in favour, please. That's everyone. Item eighteen, to consider the following financial matters for 2025, 2026. Eighteen point one, to appoint the responsible financial officer. Do you need that to go into confidential?
Um, no, um, it would just be, at the moment, for contractual reasons, it will be appointing and acting responsible financial officer.
Okay, councillor Pearce?
Propose that Sarah as our current acting responsible financial officer, um, continues in that role. With, um, further review to be advised at the appropriate time.
Okay, seconded by councillor Jones, all in favour, please. That's everyone. Eighteen point two, to confirm the bank signatories.
So at the moment, we believe there are councillors Pearce, Begum, Brooks and Barker.
We happy to continue, yeah. Councillor Colby?
Um, I would be interested in joining as Chair of Finance.
Okay, can we have another one?
Yeah.
Councillor Pearce?
So propose that the existing four plus nil will be confirmed as authorised signatories for the coming year.
Seconded by councillor Webb. Councillor Murray, did you? Or were you just seconded? Okay. Oh, thank you. All in favour, please? Everyone. Uh, eighteen point three, to confirm bank reconciliation signatories.
Uh, currently councillors Rappensberger and Page.
Councillor Colby?
I propose that they're both able to continue.
Seconded by councillor Webb, all in favour, please.
We haven't had an indication from councillor Page if he wants to continue to do so. So we just take that subject to him wishing to, and if not, we'll take it back to the next meeting to, um, confirm.
Okay, or do you want somebody else to put themselves forward in case he doesn't want to do it anymore?
That might be beneficial, yes.
Would anybody like to? Councillor Youngman?
I wouldn't mind.
Thank you.
Seconded by councillor Jones?
Propose herself, don't you?
Yeah, all in favour, please. That's everyone. Thank you. Uh, eighteen point four, to confirm internal controllers and substitute.
So at the moment, the internal controller is councillor Youngman and I don't believe we have a substitute. Whoever is, sorry? Is it James? Okay, I guess James, he didn't, okay. Whoever's appointed this time needs to come in and do the internal control before the 13th of June, I think it is, so.
And so you're happy to do that? Proposed by councillor Colby, seconded by councillor Pearce, all in favour, please. That's everyone. Eighteen point five, to review internal control arrangements.
So this statement of internal control was uploaded as a meeting paper, so you just need to, um, accept that that's an adequate statement of internal control.
Okay, councillor Colby?
I, I have to propose that because it's a very, it's a very concise and reports about what we need to do. And if, if we hadn't been doing well, we've had problems with the audit anyway, so we're meeting requirements.
Okay, councillor Pearce, seconded, all in favour, please. That's everyone. Eighteen point six, to note, a review of fees and charges applicable, applicable from first of April 2025 has been undertaken by the Finance and Governance Committee and approved amendments implemented.
That's just to note.
To note, but does anybody have any comments? Eighteen point seven, to consider approval of the use of BACS and CHAPS payments methods. Um, councillor Colby?
I would propose that we go ahead and do that with the, I think we've got us delegation to staff to use the CHAPS if, where necessary.
Yeah, uh, councillor Jones, seconding, all in favour, please. That's everyone. Item nineteen, to consider a recommendation from the Marina Theatre Project Committee regarding out of project scope work to make improvements to the first floor auditorium seating. The meeting paper was uploaded in the members' area. Does anybody have any comments? Councillor Colby?
Um, the, the actual board, um, the, the committee actually did agree to recommend going forward with work on this. However, there were conditions put on to it, which was the project must not impact on the existing, uh, work that's going on or cause a delay. That an additional team would be allocated to deal with the project and that separate contract for additional work would need to be agreed and pr- approved. And that the lease would need to be agreed and signed. Unfortunately, the final section of that, we haven't actually got to yet. Um, the, we had a joint meeting and it was all agreed within the meeting that it was fine, but we, they each needed to go off to their bodies. Um, we understand that the, we have just received a copy of the Marina Theatre Trust back, so it does rather put us in an awkward position with this because we have to actually have the, um, the lease in place before we can, it, it, we, the whole risk is actually on the council if we don't actually have the lease in place. Um, and it will be a case of, of looking at that, that we've moved it forward to actually be discussed at this meeting because we're very keen to try and help the Marina Theatre Trust out because they can't give out seating at the moment because they don't know what's going on.
Yeah.
But it's still an awkward thing to go ahead and do all of this without actually having that going on or knowing what exactly is happening at the moment with them. Um, so I, I find it difficult at the moment to actually recommend anything to cancel on it.
We could just go to Sarah just to respond to that.
I mean, councillor Colby is correct, but I think what, what I suggested at the last project committee meeting was it would be favourable if the lease was in a position to be signed. Um, and they had a date that they were going to have a full trustees board meeting at the Marina Theatre. They brought that forward and they've had the meeting and they went back to their solicitor with very minor clarifications, is how they've been described to me. Their solicitor had not responded to our solicitor since the previous joint working party meeting when we all, all parties were there, or both parties were there with their, um, legal reps. They have now done so, they did so on the 13th of May. Unfortunately, I don't know why our solicitor didn't get that email, I don't know why. It's just, yeah, very unfortunate. She has now got it, she's now working through it. Whilst it's not signed, there's no reason to think it won't be at this stage. We are at that final, final stage with it. Um, so it's a very seesaw, isn't it? It hasn't been signed. I said it would be favourable when asking full council to consider this matter tonight, if we're in a position that the lease was signed, it hasn't been signed. It doesn't mean it won't be and it's obviously for councillors to decide the appropriate way forward. Um, members will have seen the paper, they will note the costs of the additional works are less than was first proposed, um, quite significantly. Um, I think councillor Colby's covered everything else that was discussed at project committee.
Thank you. Councillor Pearce?
Well, noting that we don't anticipate any problems, um, the lease is a prerequisite. It's also a prerequisite for cover operating costs during the enforced closure period, uh, which is due to start, or was originally due to start based on the original timetable, third week of next month. Um, so, um, I propose that we defer a decision and put this on full council agenda for next week and hope that something moves in the next seven days.
Councillor Murray?
Broadly along that line, in that the document said that it was to be recommended, presented to the 27th meeting and therefore something may come out of the woodwork. As long as it's not the wood that they're hoping to build seats with, um, by then, for us to make a more informed decision.
So would you like to second councillor Pearce's proposal?
Uh, just, just to note, because of the comment that's been made publicly about the marina being unable to allocate seats. This was not part of the original project, which actually came largely from the marina. Uh, the marina commissioned, uh, by agreement with East Suffolk Council. They commissioned the feasibility study and the Reba Three work, so actually the final scope of works actually came from the marina. Uh, with Foster Wilson sites, who were their consultant for that original process. So, um, if the seating wasn't part of that, then, you know, you have to question very much why wasn't it part of it. So, uh, it, until, unless and until this is agreed, the seating to be allocated is the current seating, there's no ambiguity on that. Uh, this is, this is a major, uh, out of scope addition of works, it's not part of the, uh, Marina project. Uh, that was agreed and which was tendered for. And that needs to, there needs to be no ambiguity on that. It was not part of the project that was agreed and tended for, it is a, a major variation.
So we've had a proposal, it's been seconded, all in favour, please. Yeah, that's everyone. So item twenty, the date of the next meeting is next week, 27th of May, 2025, at 6:30. Items for the next agenda, we've got the marina, anything else?
Flood barrier one.
The flood barrier. Okay, and I don't think we have any confidential items.
We do, uh, councillor Murray wanted to go through the actions from the confidential notes, which I've been having a quick look at.
Uh, so, okay, so item twenty-two, to resolve that under the public body, yeah.
I believe there's a meeting, uh, I'll be deliberately circumspect just in case. Uh, I believe there's a meeting on Thursday to look, uh, with, um, external subject matter experts involved to look through the interpretation script for the town hall. So it might be worth checking with Sheila whether it is anticipated that any recommendations are going to come out of that meeting that might need to be agreed by full council and if so, to put a placeholder on the agenda.
Yeah, just checking, I don't know about the meeting.
I didn't know about a meeting on Thursday, Mike.
Not meeting of the project committee, it's, uh, some people who apparently volunteered in January, uh, including two local historians uh, who are usually consulted on such matters to look through a draft interpretation script. I think it may well. I think it may well be just a first phase thing anyway, so I don't think decisions are there, but it might be prudent just to check with Sheila whether any recommendations are anticipated from that meeting.
She'll get a draft agenda to comment on anyway, sort of normally do with the project managers, so it's fine, we can do that.
Councillor Pearce, have you got your hand up? No. Okay, so item twenty-two, to resolve that under the Public Bodies Admissions to Meetings Act 1960 the public be excluded from the meeting on the grounds that publicity would be prejudicial to public interest by reason of the confidential nature of any business to be transacted, namely any legal and employment issues relating to matters on the agenda. Proposed by councillor Youngman to go into confidential sessions, seconded by councillor Barker, all in favour please? Thank you very much. Do you want to wait till we go into confidential or?
Yeah.
Just wait for the live to be turned off?